Hi, the meeting will please come to order. This is a regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Willmet. I'll now ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Sullivan. Trustee Barrow.
Here.
Trustee Dodd.
Here.
Trustee Kersman.
Here.
Trustee Kennedy.
Trustee Kennedy.
Here.
Trustee Plunkett.
Here.
President Polinski.
Here. We're all here, so we obviously have a quorum. This meeting is being conducted remotely via the Microsoft Teams software. I'll now ask Peter Skiles, our Director of Administrative Services, to explain some logistics to the members of the public who are joining us tonight.
Thank you, President Polinski. Thank you, President Polinski. Everyone will have joined the meeting tonight muted. When President Polinski calls for public comments, those joining us with the Teams client can toggle their mute status by clicking on the microphone icon on the meeting toolbar. Those joining us by audio conference dial-in can toggle their mute status by pressing star six. Only attendees can unmute themselves. No one is able to unmute another attendee. And just a reminder that public comment can also be provided by emailing publiccomment@willmet.com or through the Village's YouTube livestream located at the address on the screen. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. For those watching this video in the future, the Village of -- I'm sorry, the state of Illinois is currently under a stay-at-home order which was issued by Governor Pritzker due to the global pandemic. As a result, all in-person Village governmental meetings have been canceled. However, the state has suspended the Opens Meeting Act to permit electronic meetings of governmental bodies like the Village Board, and we are conducting our business tonight in compliance with the guidelines from the state. I believe Mr. Stein tonight will be explaining to us the new legislation, which has not yet been signed by Governor Pritzker, which, again, changes the Open Meeting Act with regards to electronic meetings. So as usual, this meeting is being broadcast live on our local access cable channel six and on the Internet at www.youtube.com/user/villageofwillmet/live. So I'll read the URL one more time for people who are watching on channel six and may want to move to YouTube. www.youtube.com/user/villageofwillmet/live, and there's no spaces or dots or dashes. Recording of the meeting will be archived on the Village's YouTube website as we do with all of our televised public meetings. Now, a remote meeting obviously requires a different mechanic for public participation, so to ensure our residents, business owners, and other interested parties have the opportunity to participate in this meeting, we have solicited public comment prior to the start of the meeting via email. So if you sent an email to publiccomment@willmet.com prior to the start of the meeting, our staff will read the email during the public comment portion of the agenda. Now, if members of the public who are watching the broadcast would like to participate during our designated public comment periods, you may also submit comments through the YouTube Live chat feature. And a member of the Village staff will then read your comments to the Village Board. Finally, for those of you who have connected to the meeting via Microsoft Teams or via the telephone, at the appropriate time, I'll ask people to speak up if they'd like to make a public comment. Because of logistical difficulties of not being in person together, I will first just ask people to identify themselves as someone who would like to address the board. I will assemble a list, and then I will return by calling on individuals, person by person, for their turn to speak. For people who speak during public comment, they will be allotted three minutes to address the board, just as they would be during an in-person meeting. All comments received from the public, regardless of how they are received, will be recorded into the meeting's minutes as we typically do. And again, I would remind people to please keep their connections on mute until they are ready to speak. Before each meeting, the Board receives a packet of agenda materials. These materials are also posted on willmet.com on the Friday before our meeting, so that residents and other interested parties can review the very same materials that the Board members receive. This week's agenda packet included 381 pages. So moving on through the agenda, we've already completed the roll call, so we'll move on to public comment. Again, at an in-person meeting, individuals are allotted up to three minutes to address the board on an item which is not on the agenda. However, as I said, this is a remote meeting, so I will now ask people who are watching on YouTube Live to submit their comments for the Village staff to read. You can find the chat window to the right of the YouTube Live video window. While they're typing, I will ask whether any public comments were submitted in advance of the meeting. So, Mr. Artiega, did we receive any public comments in advance of the meeting?
We have. We have received nine public comments.
All right.
Okay. First public comment from Sheri Medwin. Dear President Polinski, Trustee Sullivan, R. O. Dodd, Kersman, Kennedy, and Plunkett, and Village Manager Mike Bremen. This past week's Nextdoor social media site, Willmet, features dozens of posts asking what North Shore residents can do to ameliorate the injustices suffered by African-Americans in this country. As the recent protests and marches have demonstrated, police brutality is not the only symptom of systematic racism. Segregated housing and education, especially in the Chicago metropolitan area, have created yawning wealth gaps which, thanks to COVID-19, have now exposed disturbing health gaps as well. Displaying BLM signs and holding rallies, such as the one planned for tonight in Willmet, are feel-good gestures, but they don't easily translate into policy. What our Village Government can do, and clearly should do, in response to the cries for help is to restore the dismantled Housing Commission and to meet at minimum the state's requirement to provide 10% affordable housing. Some of you have been around long enough to remember the refugee family from Liberia who lived in Willmet from 2007 to 2008, sponsored by the members of the Trinity Church who put them in the house behind Panera. For the past 12 years, I have mentored a young woman from that family who now has a four-year-old son, working several jobs as she completes her associate's degree through Chicago City Colleges. She hopes to move to Willmet so her son can enjoy the cornucopia of opportunities not available in a Rogers Park neighborhood. As she wrote in a recent college essay, however, "In order to live in Willmet, you may have to be a doctor, teacher, or lawyer and have a high-paying job. The community is missing low-income families and people of color because it's set up for only high-class people that have great jobs which are out of reach for many of us, no matter how hard we work. They have early childhood programs after school, camps, sports camp, afternoon adventures, etc., just so that children can be productive during summer and learn as well. We have none of that in my neighborhood. Actually, when I was in Willmet, my home was a three-minute walk from the library. I used to walk there so I could borrow some books and meet with a tutor. Without the Willmet Library and my tutor, I don't know where my reading level would have been by now. Rather than allowing developers like Optima to contribute to an affordable housing fund, the Village should mandate that all new housing developments offer at least 15% affordable units so that this young woman, among other hard-working people of color, can share in their community's prosperity while contributing to its impoverished diversity. You have until the end of June to submit a housing plan. The community stands behind you designing a plan that is inclusive, that is anti-racist, that is welcoming to all people. Sincerely, Sheri Medwin, 848 Park Avenue." Okay, I'll move on to the next comment. This is from Ellen McManus. To the Board of Trustees, my husband and I have lived in this community for 44 years, and we want our village to be leaders in opening our minds and hearts to a commitment to a village plan that takes seriously a mandate of inclusionary zoning. That is, all new multifamily housing developments must include a percentage of affordable housing. There are so many wonderful ways our community can reach out to people of color with kindness, generosity, and caring. We call upon you to meet the deadline of June 28th to comply with the state's law and be proud that our village leaders and we, the people of our community, stand by giving persons a safe place to live in our community with warm, welcoming words and join them in meals, parks, playgrounds, and backyards to feel with them green grass on the bottom of our feet, just maybe for the first time in their lives, sharing fun and laughter. From Ellen McManus at 705 11th Street. I'll move on to the next public comment. This is from Lisa Braganca. Dear Willmet Trustees, on June 4th, you said, "It is our responsibility as a community to foster an inclusive environment where people of all racial, ethnic, religious, and cultural backgrounds feel safe and welcomed. I agree. I also agree with your statement. To earn this civic trust, we will continue to foster a safe and equitable community. Are these just pretty words, or will you, as trustees, back up those words with action? Today, we can see objective evidence that Willmet is not a welcoming community for African-Americans. That evidence is that the African-American population in Willmet is less than 1%. Why is that? Why would African-Americans not want to live in Willmet? A big reason is likely that they cannot afford to. Centuries of systematic racism, including redlining and discrimination in federal mortgage lending, has been a big factor in African-Americans having 1/10th the wealth of white Americans. In order to achieve an equitable community, we need to make room here in Willmet for African-Americans who have not been able to accumulate the assets to pay market rates for houses or apartments. To limit our welcome to only those African-Americans who have been able to overcome the tremendous obstacles to accumulate the wealth to buy or lease a home, here is not enough. That ignores our role in failing to ensure for centuries that African-Americans are treated equally under the law. It is not equitable to ignore the systematic racism of not just private actors but local, state, and federal governments. Equity demands that we must make room in our community for African-Americans who have been discriminated against by government and private actors. That means Willmet must increase the number of affordable housing units in the village and affirmatively reach out to African-Americans to convey that Willmet is a welcoming and equitable community. The time is now to take affirmative steps to become a truly welcoming and equitable community. Thank you, Lisa Braganca, 2125 Washington Avenue." I will move on to the next comment. And this is from Lolly Watt. Dear Trustees, I am writing to ask you to include inclusionary zoning and other testing techniques in the affordable housing plan you will shortly be submitting to the state of Illinois. I recently received an email from President Polinski reiterating his support for diversity and for all residents of our village. The way to actually show support for diversity is to take steps to ensure we can have a broader range of economic groups calling Willmet home. The development of an actionable affordable housing plan with teeth is very important to this. Using home rule as a reason not to develop and implement a meaningful plan which is thoughtful, effective, and enforceable is very disappointing. I urge you to reconsider. Thank you for your service to the community. Best regards, Lolly Watt, 811 Chilton Lane." Okay, moving on to the next one. Sorry, one second. All right. Apologies for the delay. All right, this is from Lyowatt. Dear Board, my name is Lyowatt, and I am a 23-year-old lifelong resident of Willmet. I implore the Board to release the revised Affordable Housing Plan with significantly increased provisions towards the active creation of more affordable housing in Willmet. Please look to Highland Park for an example of successful inclusionary zoning that has helped to create a richer and more vibrant community than we have in Willmet. The lack of diversity in our community negatively impacted my childhood and teen years in Willmet. I am writing to the District 39 and 203 School Board as well to encourage them to enact anti-racist curriculum and hire more diversely in their staff, among other measures. My education in Willmet would have been better with a more diverse curriculum, but it would have been far richer with more diverse classmates. Affordable housing is the way to accomplish that. Thank you for your time, Lyowatt." Moving on to the next one. This is from David Farina. As one can see from the attached photo, the village never completed the job of paving the alley between 17th and 18th and Forest Avenue. Currently, roughly half of the alley has been paved, while the entire alley between 16th and 17th was repaved last year. The unfinished section is in truly terrible shape with several enormous potholes. We were told at the time that the top half was repaved, the village ran out of money allocated to paving the alley, so just stopped. We understand how that can happen, but this year, other nearby alleys are being completely repaved. Additionally, the houses on the south side of the alley are on Lake Avenue. As a result, the alley is the primary usage point for all those houses facing Lake Avenue. The children that live in those homes utilize the alley extensively as Lake Avenue is such a heavily trafficked street. I strongly think the village should reconsider and finish the alley paving job at 17th and 18th and Forest Avenue. Thank you, David Farina. President Willmet Police Pension Fund, 1716 Forest Avenue." Okay, moving on to the next one. This is from Daniel O'Brien. Please consider a yes vote to extending and completing the alley repair replacement on the 1700 Alley of Lake and Forest Avenues. The eastern stretch of the alley is riddled with large potholes, making it unsafe for pedestrian and bicyclist traffic, as well as doing damage to cars. The alley is the only option for entrance/exit to our Lake Avenue-facing neighbors. Best, Maggie and Dan O'Brien, 1705 Forest Avenue." President Polinski, we have two additional public comments, but the residents who submitted them, I can see that they are actually in this call waiting, I believe, to speak during the public comment portion, so I can hold on to their emails for the time being.
I was going to say, why don't you read the names now, if you would, and we can ask them what they'd like to have their comment read, or whether they'd like to address the Board at the appropriate time.
Absolutely. The first resident is Gail Schechter.
Gail, would you prefer to have Mr. Artiega read your comments, or would you prefer to speak?
I would like to speak, please.
Okay. So we'll hold your comment. Mr. Artiega won't read it. I will, when I do the in-person comments, I will -- you're already on the list. I just put you on the list, so you don't have to tell me again.
And the second email is from Eric Leaderback.
And I would prefer my comment was read.
Okay. I will read Mr. Leaderback's comment. Dear Village Board, I am writing to ask that the Village of Willmet consider mandating that all new housing developments include units affordable to people who aren't wealthy. This is the most important step the village can take to bring about racial equity in Willmet as people of color as a whole are in less than white people. The current Affordable Housing Plan is not sufficient, as it makes including affordable housing and new developments optional after a 60-day waiting period. As I understand it, not a single for-profit developer has opted to include affordable housing since this was passed in 2004. Increasing the Affordable Housing in Willmet from 4.5% to 15% is vital for a number of reasons, and one of those reasons is education. As any of the 4,000 people at the Winnetka Walk for Black Lives Matter this Saturday heard, the experience of going to school in an area so drastically lacking in racial diversity is incredibly difficult for students of color. One speaker, a rising sophomore whose family has since moved because of this very issue, mentioned that she experienced at least one racial bias incident every single year of school on the North Shore. This lack of diversity in our schools is not only a problem for students of color, but also for white students, as it keeps them in ignorance on the North Shore bubble. There is only so much you can learn from students that have the same socioeconomic, racial, and cultural background as you. The nonprofit group Nutria Heroes, Healing Everyday Racism in Our Schools, viewed affordable housing so vital to dismantling racism at Nutria that they said the following. While all the eight steps above should be seen as necessary Band-Aids that will make living in a racist society slightly more bearable, they ultimately do little to change the underlying inequality, social relations, political power dynamics, and economic realities of racism in America. Housing discrimination, both in the past and in the present, has done more than perhaps any other factor in perpetuating the unconscionable racial wealth gap in American society while simultaneously ensuring that schools are more segregated today than they were in 1968. A lack of affordable housing effectively denies historically disadvantaged families across to a variety of resources, including schools, healthcare, community programs, etc. In 2019, Nutria's student body was 0.6% black students. If we want our society to change in the way that so many citizens across the country are now hoping it will, we need to change this. Thank you for your consideration, Eric Leaderback." And that is the end of the public comments we received, other than Gail's, which I believe she will read.
Okay, so at this point in time, Ms. Schechter, you're on the list already, but are there any other people who've either dialed in via the phone or the Microsoft Teams software who would like to speak during public comment? I will first assemble a list, and then I will go back to each individual person. If you'd like to speak, please unmute your line and let me know. Okay, it sounds like, it sounds like Ms. Schechter, you're the only one who would like to address us, so at this time, I will turn the floor to you. And as a reminder, you do have three minutes, just like you would have if you were in a regular Village Board meeting. And welcome, I haven't seen you in a while. Hope you're, I don't know if you're on the phone, or if you're connect -- oh, there you are. Nice to see you. How are you?
You too, thank you. I'm fine, thanks, and you?
I'm very well, thank you.
Okay, I have a short statement here. I moved to be here because I was among the 4,000 people on the Winnetka Green last Saturday, all of us committing ourselves to ending structural racism on the North Shore. I felt shame for a 16-year-old speaker who said she was one of just two black students in her Willmet kindergarten class, and one of her white classmates made a racist comment to her in kindergarten. This is because we're not dwelling together. In committing ourselves to ending structural racism, the very first place we should look to, just as in the '60s, is access to housing. It is on affordable housing that I focus here, because income and race correlate much more than they did in the '60s. I serve on the State Housing Appeals Board in the Affordable Housing Advocate seat. We enforce the Affordable Housing Planning and Appeal Act. I am here to advocate that Willmet update its plan by the June 28th deadline, which means setting an inclusionary zoning policy that applies to all developers, including in the central business district. Just as we ask developers to accept as a cost of doing business costly sprinkler systems for fire safety or open space for trees, so should we require 15% of a new development to include both low-market rate units. Years ago, I asked a group of Willmet religious leaders why it was so difficult to get the village to make mixed-income housing a policy, and a minister replied that I was messing with the brand, that Willmet brand of lake trees and great schools. Well, why can't that brand also be about racial and economic diversity and inclusion? I understand that Willmet invoked its home rule status in refusing to update its plan, but the statute is clear, and I quote, "local government means a county or municipality," without a qualifier about home rule. In the first place, this law was passed because, quote, "all citizens of the state are affected by a shortage of affordable housing." We have signs, finally, we have signs celebrating first responders on Willmet parkways. They are also disproportionately people of color or immigrants, but first responders also do not earn enough to rent or buy in Willmet. In closing, I have no doubt that the Illinois Housing Development Authority will accommodate the village as it chooses to move forward by June 28th in good faith with workable plan, and I and Aida are here to help if you need it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schechter. Okay, so now, we've gone through those submitted in advance, we've gone through people who wanted to address us. I will now return to Mr. Artiega to ask him if there were any comments that came in via YouTube Live, the chat box.
There are no comments in YouTube Live.
Okay, so that will conclude public comment. I'm just going to make a quick comment. Rather than have --
Mr. Polinski. I'm sorry, if I could jump in here, and so this is Village Manager Mike Bremen. We just received a chat through Microsoft Teams from Mimi Rodman. She says she had sent an email, but it might not have been received. Alex, did we receive an email from Mimi Rodman?
No, I don't believe so.
I don't know if Mimi is --
She's, I think she may be on the line. I'll recognize you for three minutes if you'd like to, if you'd like to address the Board and either read the content of the email or make other comments.
I can, I'll do this in two minutes, and thank you so much. Just so you know, I, and if we didn't do it right, I apologize, but I know two other people who are on our blog who submitted comments as well. Some may have sent them directly to Ryan Kearney. So, in brief, I would just like to say, first of all, thank you for your public service, and I know you guys have been faced with a lot of difficult decisions ahead. I am writing, I'm calling today, I'm speaking today regarding the alley, the same issue that Debbie Farina spoke about and the O'Briens spoke about. But before I get to the specifics of that, I'd just like to say that the comments are very consequential comments that were made by Gail and others are really important, and I appreciate and value those as well, and hope that you'll take them into consideration. Issues about an alley might seem mundane in comparison to those very important issues, and, but specifically on this one, we've got a half alley which needs repaving. We hope you'll take it into consideration. It's between Lake Avenue and Forest Avenue and 17th and 18th. It is only a half alley. All the areas around it have been repaved. It is a very busy alley because we're near St. Joe's and because we're also near Lake Street, and so the Lake Street folks don't have the opportunity to obviously park on the street. So, would love you to look at it. We've submitted photos, including one of a four-inch hole that is in the asphalt there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so now I believe we can move on. Before we move on, though, I just want to make a comment. Obviously, we just heard a number of comments regarding affordable housing, so I'm going to ask our Village Manager, Mr. Bremen, and our Director of Community Development, Mr. Adler, to prepare some materials for the Board to review, both on the law, on our historical actions, the recent actions that we've taken, and the like, so that the trustees can have sufficient materials here to inform sort of how we go forward. So, Mr. Bremen, if you would take care of that, I don't know if Mr. Adler's on, actually I do see him, so if the two of you would take that up, I would appreciate that, as with the Board. Okay, so we're moving on to item three, which is the consent agenda. As described on the agenda, items which are routine business that are not normally debated by the Village Board are placed on the consent agenda. All items beginning with the number three are on the consent agenda, and tonight, that is item 3.1 through 3.15. Items on the consent agenda are up for approval tonight. If an item is not removed by a member of the audience, and it's not removed by one of the trustees, the item will be approved, and it will not be discussed. So I will begin by asking if there's any member of the audience who would like to remove an item from the consent agenda. So if you are watching on YouTube Live, you should submit your request now. And while the YouTube Live folks are typing, I'll ask if the staff received any requests that any items be removed from the consent agenda. Mr. Artiega, any requests for items to be removed from the consent agenda?
We did not receive any requests.
Okay, and then are there any individuals who've connected to the meeting via Teams or via the telephone who would like to remove an item from the consent agenda? I would ask people to identify themselves now if they have an item that they would like to remove from the consent agenda. Okay, you have to unmute your phone, just give you one more sec, just in case. All right, so then I will move back now to YouTube Live. Were there any items that anybody in the YouTube Live chat box asked to be removed from the consent agenda?
There were none, no.
Okay, so move on. Are there any items that any of your trustees would like to remove from the consent agenda? All right, hearing none, may I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
So moved. I think Trustee Dodd got that one in first, Trustee Sullivan. Sorry, so I'll give you the second. Trustee Sullivan, would you second the motion?
I'll second it.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. With the clerk, please call the roll on the motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Trustee Sullivan.
Aye.
Trustee Barrow.
Aye.
Trustee Dodd.
Aye.
Trustee Kersman.
Aye.
Trustee Kennedy.
Aye.
Trustee Plunkett.
Aye.
President Polinski.
Aye. The motion carries, the consent agenda has been adopted. We'll move on to item four, which is Report of Officers. And to begin my report tonight, I am going to read the letter to the community from the Village of Willmet Board of Trustees, which was sent to residents on June 4th, 2020. I would ask that, when the minutes are prepared for this meeting, that the verbatim text that I read is included in the minutes and not a summary. So again, this is a letter to the community from the Village of Willmet Board of Trustees dated June 4th, 2020. The Village of Willmet Board of Trustees denounces the actions of the police officers involved in the tragic and abhorrent death of George Floyd. These actions and similar incidents have led to demonstrations and calls for racial and social justice across the country. Our Board absolutely rejects any acts of violence and discrimination against any other person in our community. The Village Board is proud of the high standards established by our Police Department and their efforts to build relationships throughout our community, our entire community. Our Police Department has and will continue to serve our community with compassion, empathy, acceptance, and understanding. Acts of racial injustice have no place in our society. It is our responsibility as a community to foster an inclusive environment where people of all racial, ethnic, religious, and cultural backgrounds feel safe and welcomed. We must not pretend that Willmet is immune from racism. We need to support our neighbors and reject racism in all its forms. Peaceful protests have historically been a catalyst for bringing about positive change in our society. For those seeking to peacefully exercise their First Amendment rights to demonstrate and seek change, the Village wholly supports those efforts and will treat all involved with understanding, compassion, and respect. Civic trust is a privilege that must continue to be earned by the Village daily. To earn this trust, we will continue to foster a safe and equitable community for our residents and visitors. It is our duty to join together peacefully as neighbors to cultivate a welcoming Willmet. And it's signed, Village President Bob Polinski, Trustee Peter Barrow, Trustee Kathy Dodd, Trustee Gina Kennedy, Trustee Joel Kersman, Trustee Centa Plunkett, Trustee Dan Sullivan. This letter was signed, as I said, by all the members of the Village Board, and I do thank all of them for their prompt attention to and their comments and thoughts on the letter last week. Next, I would like to announce that I have asked our Village Manager, Mr. Bremen, our Police Chief, Chief Murphy, to prepare a report for the Board and the community which details the following. The use of forced policies for the Willmet -- details the following: the use of force policies for the Willmet Police Department; relevant context to compare our policies with best practices in use today; and finally, but not, it can, this report can include more than this, but at a minimum, a history of complaints lodged against the Willmet Police Department. I've asked the two of them to make this a priority so that they can present this information to us sometime over the next couple of weeks. I'll move on to the report from our village manager, Mr. Brayman.
Thank you, President Polinski. Building off your request for that information from the police department, I do want to let the board and community know that as these important conversations are happening across the country and we're all doing a lot of self-reflection, we'll be looking at our personnel policies across the organization, not just the police department, as well as training opportunities, training such as unconscious bias and other like opportunities that we can make sure we're providing to the staff, and when we have those updates, we'll provide those to the board and community as well. And also, last week, the village had taken the somewhat unusual step of issuing two public safety alerts regarding potential criminal activity in our community. We don't take those types of alerts lightly, and they are unusual, so I have asked Chief Murphy to join us tonight and just to provide a brief explanation of what was happening last week and last weekend and what led us to, to issue those alerts and the police department's response.
Thanks, Mr. Brayman. Thank you, President Polinski and trustees. I wanted to give everyone an update on the measures we took last week in regard to ensuring that Willmet and neighboring properties were kept safe. The Willmet Police Department works closely with local and regional partners to proactively and effectively provide police protection for our community. Based on intelligence from statewide intelligence center, threats of a widespread rioting and looting were expanding beyond the city of Chicago during the weekend of May 30th. On Saturday, May 30th, we were notified by the Skokie Police Department of Intelligence indicating a threat, threat of over 300 looters to target Old Orchard Mall at 12:00 a.m. on Sunday, the 31st. As you're aware, Old Orchard Mall is on our border, and such criminal activity can quickly and easily spill into our community. Willmet police personnel were assigned to the mall, including myself, where I had worked with Skokie police leaders at their command post. There was a police response of over 100 officers, including members from specially trained and equipped regional teams used for large protests or riots. As part of the strategy to deter criminal activity at Old Orchard Mall, the Village of Skokie closed the Old Orchard off-ramps from the Edens Expressway. Given our close proximity to the Old Orchard ramps and the likelihood that their closure could force criminal activity into Willmet, the closure of Lake Avenue and Skokie off-ramps were a prudent course of action, and one that was then replicated by the communities to the north. In addition to the credible threat against Old Orchard Mall on May 31st, the next several days brought additional threats against Old Orchard, as well as incidents of individual, individuals smashing business windows and groups entering retail locations to commit thefts in Evanston and Skokie stores just a few blocks from our southern border. Other communities off the Edens Expressway also experienced these crimes. As such, we were in regular communication with business property owners and determined the best course of action was to place barricades around the larger shopping center parking lots off the expressway to assist in protecting their property. Additional measures, such as increased patrol staffing, reassigning detectives to patrol, and the utilization of command staff to cover both day and night shift, were implemented. This led to a very visible police presence in the community, particularly in our business districts. Our enhanced police presence and other actions described above were effective in preventing criminal activity in our community. Over the course of several days, there were small and large groups of individuals who came through our community with the potential purpose of looting commercial properties. These individuals were quickly deterred as they were not looking to engage with police and moved out of Willmet. I would also like to take a moment to thank our officers for their hard work in deterring crime in Willmet, as well as to thank the community, which has been incredibly supportive of the police department. Over this last week, I have received several emails of support, and while on patrol, I myself experienced residents walking up to say thank you and express their appreciation for our presence and our efforts. These simple gestures have been impactful. We pride ourselves on our professionalism and our connection and trust with the community. I have been and continue to be appreciative to work and, and serve in such a supportive community. Thank you.
Mr. Brayman, is anything further from your report?
That concludes my report, thank you.
Okay, so we'll move on to the report from our Corporation Council, Mr. Stein, and you have a report tonight, I believe?
I do, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, just want to give everybody a brief update on some legislation that's going to impact our ability to have meetings. Right now, the Senate bill has been passed by both houses, has been sent to the governor, but the governor has not signed this bill. As of June 4th, it was sent there, and obviously today's the 9th, so we do expect it to be signed soon. The bill was actually referenced in the last proclamation from the governor, so there is all intentions that there will be some changes to the Urban Meetings Act. The good news is that we're basically doing everything that the new requirements are addressed, by having these as a Teams meeting where everybody's able to identify each other, actually doing full roll-call votes, even on adjournment would be required, so, and these types of, of things that we've been doing with the public comment and the different medium in which people can make public comments are all listed in this new, in this new act, and we're addressing all of them. The only thing that's, that would be new is that there is to be one member of the, either the public body, chief legal counsel or chief administrative officer physically present at the meeting location, that would obviously be Village Hall. Mr. Brayman and I will take turns either being physically present at the meetings or both be there for all village board meetings, and also in the last emergency declaration that was just passed a few minutes ago, Mr. Brayman has been given the authority to designate someone else the chief administrative officer for the purposes of those meetings. The real reason behind that requirement seems to be that just in case someone does come to Village Hall looking for the meeting, that there is physically someone there. So we will be able to address that appropriately. When this meet, when this, I'm sorry, when this legislation does pass and is, is in effect, I will let the board know in an email, and the other thing, the other kind of important thing, is that there will be no more requirement that meetings be necessary or have an immediate need or have agenda items on there or these encouragements that were given by the governor. Just simply doing it through this method is allowed, and it can open up to all meetings that we want to have. Not that we would have unnecessary meetings, but we have the option, so, and that concludes my report.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Stein. I'm not planning on calling any unnecessary meetings, but that, there is a change in sort of the perspective here, which is it's time for local government to get back to business, and so as a result, you know, there were a handful of sort of things in front of committees, administration, land use, other committees, and, and I think, at least for committees of the board, that the chairs of those committees and the staff should plan on having some committee meetings again. I think some of our boards and commissions are going to kick back into gear, the zoning board and the other land use related ones. There are obviously some things in front of us which really are going to require a good amount of public engagement and public comment and, and, and some real, you know, a level of engagement that may be difficult to do electronically, and to the extent, I, I don't think it makes sense to move forward with those types of items, but I think there's a lot of things on our plate, and, and I just time for the wheels of government to start moving again. So, given the change in the law, I think that, once it happens, it hasn't changed yet, but once it happens, I think that's the message that the General Assembly is sending to us, is we may be doing this for a while and we can't put everything on hold forever. Okay, Mr. Stein, was that, do you think my, my interpretation of that is consistent with the intent of the legislation?
Yes, absolutely. I think that is the exact reason for this, so, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. All right, so we'll move on to item five, which is the report of the Liquor Control Commissioner. There's no report tonight. Then we will move on to item six, which is standing committee reports. First item is item 6.1, which is the Land Use Committee, and that is trustee Barrow.
All items are on the consent agenda.
Don't get used to this easy, easy meeting stuff. When zoning gets going again, you're going to get back to work, too. Finance Committee trustee Kennedy.
All items are on consent agenda.
Okay, Administration Committee trustee Dodd.
I believe our village manager will give us a discussion of the Economic Relief Grant Program.
Yes, and I'm going to turn this one over to Assistant Manager Eric Hallgren.
Sorry about that.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and share the presentation. Can everybody view the current grant, the grant program information?
I can see it. I don't know about others, but I suspect that means everybody can.
Yes.
All right, so this is going to give a brief overview of the sales tax rebate grant program, as well as the service-based, service business grant program, and then options for reviewing the programs to see if there's a way to expand them or if we keep them as they currently are. We had discussed during the approval of both of the grant programs that we would take the opportunity, as applications started to slow down, to review the grants to see what opportunities there were for additional funding. So the sales tax rebate grant program was approved in March with a total value of $375,000, and the businesses that remit sales tax to the village were eligible for one-half of 1% of those eligible revenues. From an overview, they, we had a total value program of $375,000. To date, we have approved $218,000 in grants, and we have approved approximately 60 out of the 127 businesses that we had, we felt would be eligible for this grant program. So as of right now, there's around $156,000 that is remaining for, eligible for disbursement. For the service business grant program, this was approved several weeks later on April 14th at a total value of $156,000. Again, grants were valued at one-half of 1% with a $1,500 maximum. This maximum was put in place specifically because we were unaware of the revenues of our service-based businesses, and it provided a little bit of protection to the village in case that the revenues were significant and we wouldn't have the funds available to pay the service businesses at, at this value. But again, one of the stipulations that was in that approval is that we would, again, review options for potentially increasing this grant at a future point in time. So as of right now, out of the $156,000, we've approved around $34,000, and we've only approved around 31 of the 104 businesses that we felt would be eligible for this program.
Eric, how many of those 31 maxed out at the 1,500?
I do not know that number off the top of my head. I would, I, I think it's somewhere just over half of them, but I don't know.
It is, it is in this agenda pack, though, because I saw it.
I believe it's 50, I believe it's 50%.
Okay.
Yep. I have the presentation up, otherwise I would be able to pull my other screen out.
You're fine, that trustee Dodd and President Polinski gave me an answer, and you confirmed it.
Yep. Then, what we wanted to look at was how the application process had worked, to kind of see if we could expect to see more applications coming in. So the blue bar indicates the sales tax applications that came in, so you can see that we, when we opened up the applications, that we had significant applications from our businesses. Same thing in the week of the 27th in April, where we saw a big spike for our service businesses when we opened up that application process. So, but again, over time, the number of applications have continued to decrease, and there were no applications that had been submitted or processed within the last week. What we, we're starting to look at from a program option perspective, there were three options that we felt, but these could be combined or changed around to any way that the board would like to proceed. The first option was that we would remove the $1,500 maximum grant from the service businesses, and that we could distribute the funds at the same rate as the sales tax rebate grant programs. So based upon that, there's 15 businesses that are currently eligible to receive additional dollars. Those dollars range from $50 to several thousand dollars, depending on that business's revenues, but currently, the estimated value is just north of $34,000 to provide that additional grant funding. The second option is to increase the value of disbursement for the sales tax rebate grants. Increasing one-quarter of 1%, so a total grant distribution of three-quarters of 1% would, there'd be 60 eligible businesses, so every business that had received a sales tax rebate grant would also receive this increment, and this is valued at just around $110,000. The final option is that we would maintain the existing balances in both grant programs. We wouldn't increase any disbursements at this point in time, and this would provide flexibility to support businesses if there's another issue with COVID as we move into the future months, or there's other opportunities for us to provide grant funding to our local And that concludes the information as part of this, so if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions from any of the trustees?
Eric Peter Barrow here. Refresh my or our memories, please. When the sales tax rebate program was put into effect, the measuring period was sometime in March to the date of the application, is that correct?
So what we utilized for, there were two components as part of the application process. One of them was for looking for a reduction in revenue from the date of the local emergency over a period of time. This, but the measurement that we utilized for the actual grant value was based upon, well, for sales tax businesses, it was based upon the municipal sales tax that had been remitted to the village from February of 2018, sorry, February, February, or December through November of the prior year, so December of 2018 through November of 2019. So we use those revenue figures to make a determination of how much money they would be eligible for. The other, for the service business program, we utilize their tax return information from either 2018 or 2019 to determine the value that they were eligible for.
Yeah, and trustee Barrow, I think you were thinking of to be eligible between the date of the emergency declaration and the date of their application, their revenues had to be down 15%, and we were trying to do full year, but we didn't quite have the data to do full year 2019 as the basis.
That, that's correct, thank you both. Did you, Eric, did you consider possibly changing that measuring period to see if the, we might increase the program that way?
We did not, and as part of the application process, we asked them to certify that they had that loss in revenues. However, we have not specifically asked any of those businesses for their monthly records to validate that. Really, as part of the application, they were just certifying that statement that the revenues had gone down, but that is a potential option, that if we increase or reduce that amount to a 5% reduction or a 10% reduction, that that potentially would increase the number of eligible businesses.
Right, I wasn't necessarily suggesting any kind of an auditing type function as much as a, a longer measuring period for which, during which harm may have been suffered.
Trustee Barrow, not sure, I'm, I'm wondering, the, the, the harm was sort of a binary thing. You either were harmed or you weren't harmed, and it ran from the declaration date to the date you applied, so that didn't impact the amount.
Right, I get that, to the date you applied, but there certainly, I'm going to guess, has been harm that's been suffered since that date of application.
Right, but the point, the point being, that was never part of the determination of the dollar. Right, but the point, the point being, that was never part of the determination of the dollars. So if you were down 20 or 30 or 50%, it was no different than if you were down 15. So we, it would be a new formula, I guess, is what I'm suggesting.
Okay.
If you're suggesting.
And, and, and I'm not, I'm not suggesting that change. I just wanted, uh, some, uh, clarification, if I've done that at all.
You have a question, too.
Go ahead. Trustee, trustee Dodd, go ahead. You have a question.
So, um, I, I'm not sure I totally understood, actually, trustee Vero, what you were get-getting at. So I don't know if this is, but I, these options that you've laid out in front of us, um, Erica, kind of, at least the way I see them, give additional monies to, um, grant, actual grant recipients who have already received the money. And I think what I'm asking is to have, do we reach out, do we have any sense of, do we reach out to any of the, uh, because we have a significant number of, um, not significant, but we have a number of businesses, you know, close to 50% on the sales tax side that didn't, um, even, um, it looks like a-ass for an application for this. Um, and we have an even higher percentage on the service grant program. Do we have a sense of why those businesses haven't applied, and, um, was there not a need? Or, um, so I'm just looking at, you know, in terms of the options you've outlined, I guess I'm trying to figure out, instead of necessarily giving more money to those that applied, is there anything we could be doing to give, to help those who haven't, or do we just feel there isn't a need?
We don't necessarily know what the need determination is, but we did do an extensive marketing of this. Um, one through just our, our normal village channels, through e-news, through social media. We also worked very closely with the Chamber of Commerce to make sure that this got out to their distribution listing. And then for both the sales tax program and the service business program, we reached out to individual business groups, uh, individual businesses to see if they would have interest. Um, we received replies from some of them, um, and they, they applied shortly thereafter. There were several businesses on the sales tax side who didn't necessarily suffer a significant decrease in their sales volume, um, or their sales during that time. Um, so they didn't, they wouldn't necessarily be eligible for the program. So it's a combination, uh, of, um, people who just didn't want to apply or never responded to the village, and people who did not meet the requirements of the, of the grant.
But based on your outreach to those businesses that, you know, didn't apply, it's your understanding they didn't apply because they didn't see the need?
If they responded to us, it was generally that they did not, yes, that they were not eligible for the program because they did not have a 15% reduction. For those businesses that we, if we did not get a response back from them, we never received an application, but if we did get a response back from them, then it was they, they just didn't suffer during that period as, at the 15% level. I don't know if that clarifies it. It, it was a matter of, some businesses were just unreachable during that timeframe, or, and continue to be unreachable, um, for, for outreach.
Eric, is, is anyone else, Kathy, are you done with your question?
Yes.
Okay, so this, um, this does kind of piggyback on, on what Kathy said, and I think even a little bit what Peter said. Um, obviously, we have money left over that we fully intended, you know, to give out as a grant. But, um, you know, are we confident that, you know, businesses in the future that either did not apply, you know, are we fairly confident that this is our number of businesses? If, if they haven't already submitted, that they won't be submitting? Do we have a deadline for them to submit? Um, and as well, is there any way for businesses to say, you know, I wasn't immediately impacted, but I am impacted now?
There, um, answer, the, one of the questions is that there was no application deadline. Um, I feel fairly confident in the outreach that we did, um, between our, um, community development department through, uh, e-news, through working with the chamber, that anybody who was looking for assistance would have been able for that, to receive that assistance through the program. Um, I think that we may have some businesses that trickle in over the next several weeks, but I don't think anybody at the significant volume level that we experienced during the first several weeks of that program. Um, I don't think expanding the, uh, the timeframe for the impact will necessarily increase the number of applications, because if they were not feeling a impact from that March, um, date through some period in April when generally most businesses were closed, then I don't think as they start to reopen that they would also, that they would, that they would suffer at a greater level.
Yeah, and the way the calculation works, if they did suffer, let's say, March 17th to April 17th, it wasn't too bad, but then April 17th to today has been terrible, they would qualify in all likelihood because it's, it's that full period that counts, right? That's the way we do the math?
Correct, and we are, we are asking them just to certify that that, that they've seen a reduction. There were several businesses that we talked to, um, that said, okay, I saw a 14% reduction from March 23rd through April so-and-so. They're like, but I'll probably see a little bit worse than, in the next week or so. We had them submit that application, um, and then we went through the process because we knew that, they, they were able to then follow up with us and say, yes, we had a 15% loss over this period of time. So we didn't try to hold anybody up on that 15% if there was the expectation that they were going to continue to see losses as their business was closed.
So, I mean, I think option three retains our flexibility. It keeps the money appropriated, and should we have a resurgence, or, um, should there be, um, businesses that trickle in, um, they would still be eligible here. And just with regards to option two, I'm not sure at this point in time, given that the sales tax businesses are at least open again, um, even the non, I know they're, they're down certainly, not sure increasing it makes sense. I think the big question is, when we originally had this conversation around the service businesses, we had to cap it at $1,500 because we didn't know, the sales tax, we sort of knew what the number was. If everybody would, applied, it wouldn't be more than 375. Here, we didn't know, so we capped it. Um, and there were 15 businesses, which trustee Dodd, you accurately pointed out, was about half of the 30 whatever one, I think. And the question is, do we want to give another $34,000 to those 15 businesses? They are open again for business, uh, but that was sort of the, the notion of the cap here was just because of, we didn't know what the number was. And so that's, that's a question that I think, um, we could address. Um, Mr. Hallgren, do you know what the, you, you said it ranges from like $50 to several thousand dollars? Do you know what the maximum one is?
Um, I believe that the maximum one is around $9,000.
Wow.
That seems, yeah, like I, if, if we went with option one, I think we would need to cap it at something. Um, that seems like a lot for a service business, um, which, you know, look, service businesses are important. They enhance the business district as well, and their convenience, uh, is important to residents, but, um, that, that certainly seems like a very large number if we were to go with option one. And again, option three is just basically continue to sit, um, on the program and just in case something happens in the fall. You know, if we, if we end up shutting down again in the fall in some way, shape, or form, um, we may be happy that this money is still, um, lying around, if you will.
I'd like to jump in. I, I agree with your last comment, Mr. President. Um, you know, the, the way I understood these two programs were that they were to be a lifeline for, until other levels of government could, support could reach the businesses. And when I think about option one and two, I wonder if we're deviating from that sort of, um, approach. And I guess I have more comfort level with option three, the way you put it there, was that, um, you know, if we were to, you know, have 2.0 on this, um, you know, again, there would be an opportunity to offer a lifeline until, um, additional support, uh, might come in from other, other levels of government. So I agree with your last comment.
Yeah, and, and trustee Kersman, I agree with what you just said. When, when we all talked about this, this was never intended to be the be-all, end-all. This was exactly, as you, you phrase it, a lifeline or a bridge to, uh, those larger government programs like the PPP loans, uh, and the like. And I, and at least I'm, I'm aware of a number of, of Wilmatt businesses that did indeed apply and get PPP loans. I think some of them through, um, you know, North Shore Community Bank and the like, uh, helped process that, which I know from my own personal business experience, that was a very hectic time for, for lenders like the folks from, uh, from, uh, North Shore and Wintrust.
Um, if I can add, um, or if I can insert here, uh, my only concern is, you know, I, I think that, you know, now is the time where businesses probably need it more than ever to kind of see if they can actually stay in business and pull through. And, you know, we're talking small amounts here, but, you know, maybe every little bit counts. I just, I wouldn't want to wait too long with, you know, what we had already set aside to help these businesses and, you know, maybe have some businesses fail or have to lay off people in the meantime. I mean, you know, things are open, but barely. Um, I just want that to be a consideration. I can see all sides. I can see kind of holding on to this until the fall, but I also feel like, you know, now might be, you know, an important time to, to make sure these businesses keep going.
You know, if I could just add on to what trustee Plunkett said, I think, um, you know, I, I agree with the comments that trustee Kersman said and President Blinsky about this was intended to be kind of a bridge to a broader, um, to obviously deeper pockets of loans and things like that that they can get. The thing that just does strike me a little bit with this, and I don't know if it's an act, if equity is the right word or not, but when you look at the dollar amounts of what some of the, um, the 1,500 just seems low to me in terms of a, what we capped it at, and we capped it, we, we capped it because we didn't know. It seems low to me relative to some of the other, um, grants that were getting, that were received in the other program. Um, and so I, I, I guess I would ask staff, are any of the businesses that received this business service grant, are they asking for more? Because I, I think I might be inclined to go where you were going a little bit, um, President Blinsky, which is, you know, increase it a little, you know, put the maximum at 5,000 or whatever, and then that's, we're not, that's a, then we're talking about an even smaller amount, um, obviously, but it could make a big impact for one month while some of these businesses are trying to get reopened.
Well, and again, to some extent, we did talk about, we, we realized that we were, I don't want to say shortchanging, that's not the right word, but we were limiting the service businesses because of the unknown. And I, I think I could certainly support, again, because to your point, uh, trustee Dodd, it's, if, if one of them is nine and we limit it to five, that means that 34,000 is no more than 30,000, and probably a little bit less. And, uh, these businesses are still sort of getting going. Um, I, I, I don't think, the sales tax guys, I think, got a pretty good, those businesses got a pretty good, um, amount of money, and, and, uh, many of them were going for the PPP loans. Some of the smaller services businesses might not be going for the PPP loans, just because they might not have the sufficient payroll or whatever to make it worth the administrative effort. So, um, I, I think I could support option one with a cap, and the rest going to option, and basically combining option one and option three, where we keep the money, keep, keep the money that's been appropriated for, for the rainy day in case we have another, um, um, outbreak here, and, um, and, and bump the service, uh, businesses, the, the 15 that were limited, up to a cap of 5,000. I, I like that suggestion, trustee Dodd, from you.
This is trustee Kennedy. I second everything that's been said about that. I, I would be in favor of, of combining option one and option three with a much more generous cap for those service businesses.
I, I see some nodding heads. I mean...
Yeah, yeah, I think that makes perfect sense.
Trustee Dodd, trustee Plunkett?
Yeah, I agree.
Right, it was your idea, trustee Dodd, so I hope he's still agreeable.
It was mine. I think it was actually yours. I just piggybacked off of it, Bob, but...
You, you put the number out there. Uh, with, without numbers, it's just talk. Um, trustee Sullivan, trustee Kersman, that sounded okay, cap at 5,000, and for the service businesses, and keep the rest of the money there for, uh, what might come in the fall, the unknown of the fall. Okay, I see two nods on this. Okay. Um, Mike and Eric, or Mr. Berman and Mr. Hallgren, does that give you the kind of direction you need?
Just for clarification, we're looking at a total grant disbursement of $5,000. So if they've already received a check for 1,500...
Yes.
They would be eligible to receive up to another $3,500.
Correct.
All right. Yes, and I think that is the appropriate direction that we would need.
Okay. Good.
And, and with that, we would, we can start to, we would start to cut those additional checks, um, next week for disbursement, just to let you know.
Great, perfect. Okay, uh, so, uh, trustee Dodd, I believe that is all you had on the administration committee, uh, report.
Yes, that's correct.
So we'll move on to municipal services, uh, which is trustee Sullivan.
Uh, we have one item this evening. It's item 6.41, which is discussion of the 2020 engineering program, roads and alleys. And so I'm going to turn it over, I assume, to Ms. Berger?
Uh, I, I'm gonna ta- I'll take it.
Whomever.
I'll, I'll take it. I'm gonna just run through the slides real quick, and then Bridget and Dan will be available, um, for questions. So let me share my screen here. All right, can everybody see the screen?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so back in April, uh, when we were starting to really dig into our financial analysis relative to the impact of COVID, we had identified a number of, uh, potential, uh, budgetary savings, operating, capital, SURF, uh, and we had talked in specifically about the engineering program, roads, alleys, as well as our maintenance programs like sidewalk and curb. And we had identified potential, uh, savings, but had made the decision, uh, in talking with the village board, to delay any decisions until we had additional, um, information available to us, uh, in terms of our financial performance. Now, uh, regardless of the decisions we make, we already do have $150,000 in savings this year, just due to favorable bid prices, and that's primarily on the road, alley, and Brick Street maintenance program. So we'll save $150,000, but we're still going to be able to complete all of the planned work, uh, that we had intended to do when the board approved the budget. Uh, this evening, we're going to talk about essentially 285, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, $417,000 in additional savings on the roads and the alleys. Uh, you may recall, we approved these contracts in full at a previous board meeting with the caveat that as we gained more, uh, data on our financial performance, we'd revisit these and determine whether or not to proceed with the full programs. And then on July 14th, uh, we'll have an opportunity to review our smaller maintenance programs, sidewalk, curb, uh, and the like, about $120,000 in potential savings, and decide whether to proceed with that. But in order to, uh, complete our road and alley projects on time during the warm weather construction season, we do need to make determinations this evening. Uh, so the road program, uh, as I mentioned, we approved the contract for 2.45 miles of roadway. You may recall that is a significant increase in the number of miles of roadway per year, as this year is the first year of our enhanced funding of 2.75 million dollars a year into this program, uh, the $51,000 in savings from bids. And we did outline three blocks that we could pull out of this project and save $215,000. Uh, your packet had pictures of these blocks as well, and I have them later on if we want to review those, uh, during the discussion. Um, importantly, you know, as we've reviewed our finances, and we've looked at our different scenarios, uh, we continue to be in a strong position in 2020 financially to weather this COVID storm. Uh, our revenues have performed as expected, uh, you know, within the scenarios we've outlined, um, and we feel comfortable as staff recommending that we continue with the full road program this year. Uh, if we delay these projects, that does push them to next year, uh, creates a larger backlog of what we know are already, uh, a long list of streets in need of repair. On the alley side, uh, we will be repairing, uh, as, the, the plan was to repair four-and-a-half alleys. Uh, we did receive a couple of public comments this evening regarding, uh, the half alley, uh, and the board also received a series of emails yesterday, the additional agenda material, from a number of, uh, neighbors along that alley as well. So we, we have received that feedback, and that is in the agenda packet. Um, we do have two options for the board to consider in reducing a, a full alley, uh, on Seventh Street slash Sixth Street, and then the half alley, uh, on Forest and Lake. Uh, once again, just like the road program, you know, we do have a backlog of alleys that are in disrepair, uh, and we would recommend, given our financial performance to date, uh, that we proceed with the full alley program. that we proceed with the full alley programmed as planned. We do recognize that next year is, is going to be a very difficult budget year, and there are likely to be tough decisions that have to be made regarding capital. So the more work that we can get done this year, I think is, is really in the best interest of the community as, as we face some likely challenges moving forward. So a, as I said, next July 14th, we'll review the sidewalk, curb, and, and other types of projects. We will, at this time, recommend we do those maintenance programs as well. But we will also have another financial update at our next board meeting in advance of that decision, which will help inform the board prior to making that call. So with that, I'm available for questions, and Bridgette and Dan are here as well.
Questions for the staff? Well, hearing no questions, I mean, look, I think all of us are aware that residents have expressed concern over the conditions of the roads. That's why we increased the funding last year. And the scenarios are showing us down a little bit for the year. We're tracking reasonably well. The Chalet opened, which was not counted on in some of the projections. Yeah, it'll be interesting to see, but it, it sure seems like downtown outdoor dining is bustling. I've been down there once already myself. And even in the event that it gets a little worse, our reserves are pretty strong here. This isn't, this isn't wasteful spending. This is investment in infrastructure that our residents want. So I'm, I'm inclined to, to agree with the staff's recommendation and say we should continue on with the program as planned this year, at least at, on this point. Maybe on July 14th, we make different decisions on sidewalks. But at this point in time, that's my inclination. So I, I would just ask the trustees to share their point of view. And if, if anyone is pushing, is, if anyone is of the opinion that we should not do that, I'll let you speak first, but if I don't hear anybody, I'm going to sort of, we can sort of nod our heads and agree that we're, we're going to have the, have the spending continue this year.
And President Blinsky, I would add too, when I was talking about the maintenance programs, I don't just mean sidewalk, I, you know, it's the full, the full program, which would be pavement rejuvenation, traffic comp, curb replacement. All, all of those maintenance programs would be fully funded.
Right, at this point in time, the July 14th deadline is, is for those other items. This one, we're just streets and alleys today, correct?
Correct, yes.
Yeah, right.
And I might add in favor of continuing it, that we're getting incredibly good bids right now. And, and, and I think if we postpone it, we'll probably pay more for the same work. I, it seems to me we should take advantage of the windfall, so to, so to speak, that we're getting right now.
Well, we did get a little bit of extra MFT money as well. And, and Trustee Kennedy, to your point, the roads aren't going to get any better if we fix them next year.
Nope, it's more expensive possibly, so.
Yes.
And the roads that, that have been identified for work this year are surely the ones that are grievously, grievously needed.
They're terrible, right? There's no much.
Terrible doesn't begin to describe. And, and, and to put those further off, any number of them, I think is, is to do our residents a huge disservice. So I, I favor going ahead, full speed ahead.
I'm in favor of it. I think it, it makes sense.
Trustee Dodd, Trustee Sullivan?
Wait, you said, speak up if you disagree, so that's why.
Yeah, okay, no, I'll just, now, now we're on, do we agree?
I agree.
Sorry.
I agree with all the comments as well.
Right. Trustee Kersman?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna waste time with any comments here.
Okay, good. All right, so, Mr. Bremen, I believe you have consensus for the board to, to fix the roads and the alleys.
Yes, thank you.
And for those, there are still a few people who are hanging on the phone regarding, that includes the alley on, between 17th and 18th, Forest and Lake, right? That was one of the specific ones that we just said, yes, let's fix it.
So I, I do have a question, though. Actually, I am going to spend a little time. Mr. Bremen, is the, are we no longer having decision points then on July 14th for the other topics? Are we basically addressing that now, per the memo that's in the meeting packet?
So the, the plan is that we would hold those decision points to July 14th in case we get some type of different information that we weren't expecting. But all indications point to the fact that we're comfortable, from a staff perspective, to make that recommendation forward-looking, that, you know, that we believe we should, we should proceed with those unless something really unexpected occurs in the next few weeks.
But it will be on the agenda for the 14th?
It, it will be unless the board says we're comfortable proceeding now. We don't need it, but the plan, as we had discussed with the board back in April, was to have those items on the agenda for the 14th.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's, I, I think I would still like that to be on the agenda, Trustee Kersman, so that we, I, I mean, I think if, if we have a conversation like we just had, we'll, we'll move forward with those as well, but let's, let's keep our options open if we can.
Okay, I'm just pointing out, this is small beans on July 14th relative to what we're comfortable with proceeding tonight, but that's all I'll say.
Yeah, no, and you're right. I mean, that's, that, this is, this is what, about four times maybe as big? Something like that, so, yep.
I mean, I guess I just want to say, if you're looking for board direction on this and to the point that this is small beans, and given the statements you said, President Blinsky, earlier, I'm in support of committing to the work that we did at the beginning of the budget season. So I would be in support of also agreeing tonight for the items that are on the July 14th agenda.
And I'll agree with that as well, subject to one thing. Unless the staff comes back to us and says there's been some sort of material difference in our financial results that we should be alerted to. But absent that, I, I agree with you, Trustee Dodd, that's a good suggestion. Trustee Kersman, thank you for pointing out the, the dollars here. The rest of the board, does that make sense? That unless the staff alerts us to some sort of financial issue that we could, that will sign off on the July 14th items as well? Which, and those are, because they went on Mike's presentation, brick maintenance, street patching, sidewalk replacement, pavement marking, curb replacement, pavement rejuvenation, and traffic calming, and the total is about, I can do it in my head, 40, 65, 70, 80, 90, 110, about $130,000, something like that?
To my understanding is that the date of July 14th, I mean, the decision doesn't need to be made. Nothing is getting postponed or backlogged in this next month? Is that correct? I mean, is, is there a reason for us to decide earlier? Or is the work being done later in the summer anyway? So July 14th is perfectly fine for that decision.
Bridgette, can you jump in on that one?
I'm actually going to pass that one to Dan. Dan, sorry to put you on the spot. I don't know if there's any benefits going sooner.
Sorry, good evening, President Blinsky and members of the board. So that date is kind of the, the last date we need in order to give the contractor the information they need to do their, the remaining work in August and September. So Dan, would any work, if we decided to proceed tonight, would any of that work be done between now and July 14th? Or is this all work later, late summer, early fall? This is all late summer work.
Okay.
Can we, can we, if, President Blinsky, if it's a similar conversation and staff is recommending to move forward, can it just be on the consent agenda then?
Yeah, that makes sense. Right, that makes sense. So we'll have the memo, we'll know where things are, and if anybody wants to pull it off, they can pull it off. That's an excellent suggestion. Okay, so that's, everybody's sort of nodding their head. And so, Trustee Kennedy's vigorously nodding, nodding. I just have to comment, that's one heck of a beard, okay?
Thank you, President Blinsky.
You know, I'm, I'm on plenty of phone calls, you know, Zooms and the like for work, and, and, and that is one of the better ones that I've seen, I have to, I have to say, so. I, I couldn't come close to doing something like that. I just don't have it in me. All right, so trustees, I think we're, I think this is concluded. Mr. Bremen, you agree we're concluded here?
Yes, we have what we need.
Very good. So we'll move on to public safety, and that, Trustee Sullivan, I believe that's all you had on.
Yeah, you, you tried to take us off the rails there. Our other item was approved on consent, so we're done.
Public safety is Trustee Kersman. No report. Judiciary is Trustee Plunkett.
No report.
Let me make sure, do we have item, yes, item 6.7 is reports from our special committees. Uh, there are no reports tonight. Item seven is new business, and we don't have any additional new business to discuss. So I'll move on to item eight, which is adjournment. May I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Don't move.
That was Trustee Sullivan, is there a second?
Second.
That was seconded by Trustee Plunkett. I would ask the clerk to please call the roll on the motion to adjourn.
Trustee Sullivan?
Aye.
Trustee Barrow?
Aye.
Trustee Dodd?
Aye.
Trustee Kersman?
Aye.
Trustee Kennedy?
Aye.
Trustee Plunkett?
Aye.
President Blinsky?
Aye, so motion carries, we stand adjourned. I, I do want to thank the trustees again for their patience. Actually, with the enhanced Microsoft Teams, where we can see everybody at one time, I think it, I think it really makes a difference. So thank you, Mr. Skiles, for getting that implemented. And everyone, have a good rest of the night.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Aye.